6.5, 9:10 a.m. item. Presentation of proclamation commending Clear Lake Gleaners and Redwood Empire Food Bank for invaluable community service. Supervisor Spatier.
You guys can all come up. This is a team effort.
I'll come too.
Find where you are. You can all come up.
Come on up. Come on up.
If you are part of the Gleaners, we would love to have you up here.
Come on, you came to support.
So, without going into a different item that is on our agenda, Chair Paeska and I have been having discussions about food insecurity and our food bank and what we can do. And in all these conversations, we've always walked away with a sense of gratitude for the amount of work that goes into feeding the people of Lake County who themselves are feeling food insecurity and are in need. When it comes to our emergencies, Gleaners always comes through and we just, we can't forget those moments. And unfortunately, I feel like we haven't had this moment with you yet. And so, we felt the need to make it a very public commendations, thanking both Redwood Empire Food Bank as well as the Clear Lake Gleaners for all the work that they do to feed our people. So proclamation commending Clear Lake Gleaners and Redwood Empire Food Bank for invaluable community service. Whereas Clear Lake Gleaners located in Findlay, California is Lake County's USDA commodities distributor, the food bank of Lake County. And whereas Clear Lake Gleaners provides consistent and quality service to Lake County residents experiencing food insecurity, including scheduled monthly food box distributions throughout Lake County, cooperation in disaster response to provide food at shelter sites and local assistance centers. And whereas Clear Lake Gleaners always answers the call to serve Lake County's most vulnerable residents with compassion and caring. And whereas Redwood Empire Food Bank of Sonoma County likewise provides supplemental food deliveries to Lake County community members around the lake, sending four truckloads of critical food supplies each week. And whereas the profound need for food support in Lake County is demonstrated, for example, by Redwood Empire Food Bank serving approximately 700 households at Redbud Park each week in just 90 minutes' time. And whereas 16.5% of Lake County's residents live in poverty according to the 2020 census. And whereas collectively, Clear Lake Gleaners and Redwood Empire Food Bank serve approximately 21,870 individuals and 6,558 Lake County households. And whereas current economic circumstances, food price inflation, and the end of public health emergency, CalFresh emergency allotments, make food distributions a vital key in the continued economic and food security of Lake County residents. Now therefore, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby commend Clear Lake Gleaners and Redwood Empire Food Bank for their invaluable community service, passed and adopted this 7th day of November, 2023.
On behalf of the Gleaners, I'd like to say thank you. We have not received a proclamation like this from the Board of Supervisors in the history of the Gleaners to my knowledge. I've been there approximately seven years now, and it is appreciated, although I do have some concerns about some of the information that it contains. You referenced 21,870 individuals and 6,558 households, but there's no reference as to what period of time that covers. So, and we're serving, I believe it's 5,000 approximate now. Lisa, could you hand me the clipboard, please? Thank you. 1,246 individuals a month throughout Lake County. So I don't know where that figure comes from.
It was approximate.
It is approximate, but we don't know what period of time it covered. We have brochures and calendars for this year and next year to pass out to the board and your clerk, council. The Clear Lake Gleaners has 145 volunteer members. In addition to that, we have approximately 65 additional volunteers, volunteers on the days of distribution. We have two distributions throughout the month, the first Wednesday and the third Thursday, and that's all the way around the county. So we have Findlay as the main site, and then we go to Clear Lake, Middletown, Cobb, Nice, Lucerne, Spring Valley. We are in the process of looking at a second site in Clear Lake, which currently estimate is 280 additional people that we can, or additional families that we can serve. We're very proud to be Clear Lake Gleaners. We've been at the Findlay site for over 40 years, and I can't think of a better bunch of people to work with. They're fantastic. And I invite each of the board members to, on the 16th, come to one of the sites, whether it's the Findlay site or the one in your respective districts, and participate in the distribution. We anticipate over 700 people will come through the Findlay site that morning. And the other sites, we're looking at 165, 144. All the sites have boosted dramatically in the distribution numbers. Thank you for the proclamation. It's a pleasure to be here before the board. And if there's anybody that has any questions or anything that I can add, please don't hesitate to ask. Thank you very much.
So I just, I want to personally thank you. I do go to the deliveries at the Little Red Schoolhouse quite often and assist with handing out. It's been a little while, but this is really personal for me because after the fire when I lost my home and I was just barely trying to keep my family together, we did come and get food pickups because trying to grocery shop on top of everything when you're homeless and experiencing that level of trauma, it was just more than what we could do. So I could just show up and get a box of food and go home and figure out something to get on the table quickly. So I will never forget that. And I know that there are so many families and individuals and our seniors that are having such a difficult time these days making ends meet with the high cost of food. And that's why we're seeing so many more people come up with the need for, at the distribution sites. And so, expanding the sites is critical and expanding the capacity is critical. And I hope anyone who's listening can join us a little bit later. We do have an agenda item where we're going to get into this a little bit deeper. So I do thank you so, so much. Both the Gleaners and Redwood Food Bank are here to support all of the people in Lake County. And so I'm going to open this up. If anyone else in the room has comment that they would like to give, which it looks like there is, I'm going to pass the mic.
Good morning. I'm Rachel Dillman Parsons. I'm deputy director for Lake County Social Services Eligibility Division, and we administer the CalFresh program, among other programs. And I wanted to take a minute to thank the Gleaners and Redwood Empire Food Bank for all they do within our community to help support food stability and also to be there during disaster response, which is another part of what our department operates. The need in Lake County is great. We have 17,000 individuals enrolled in CalFresh. That's more than 25% of the population. And CalFresh is a supplemental nutrition assistance program. It's only meant to be a supplement to the households' needs, and the food distributions really help to bridge that gap. So what you do is vital to our community, and we are grateful for everything you do. Thank you so much.
Anything from the board? All right. Take our pictures.
I know that you asked to say something earlier, but I'm going to mention something. My uncle moved out from Kansas. He works with the seniors and the elders at Robinson Rancheria, and he thinks highly of the Gleaners, and he always mentions Lisa and Kate. And so, I just wanted to say that as well. Just, and they're really involved, I know. And so, from the elders in my tribe, they appreciate the work that they do. The Gleaners, of course.
It doesn't look like we have anyone from Redwood Food Bank. If we do, could you please raise your hand in the Zoom room? Not seeing any. Okay.
I'll just make a comment. I know that they're doing their food distribution today down at Twin Pines. So there was a line of cars out there. The truck was there, and they were giving out food as they drove by. So they do that every Tuesday, every other Tuesday, I think.
Okay. 6.6, 9:15 a.m. Discussion and direction to staff regarding food insecurity in Lake County. Supervisor Spatier, want to take this?
Yes. So again, as I alluded to, Chair Paeska and myself have been in conversations regarding our food insecurity and having a sit-down with both the Clear Lake Gleaners and Redwood Empire Food Bank on how to, I like what was mentioned in our meeting, how to not split the pie, but how to grow the pie because there is greater need. Clear Lake Gleaners is our official food bank for Lake County. They receive the full 100% of what is available in proceeds and funds from the state and federal government to help us with food insecurity. We're looking for ways to better accommodate the needs of Lake County. And so, we sat down with Social Services, as I mentioned, both Clear Lake Gleaners and Redwood Empire Food Bank. Administration was with us, Matthew Rothstein and Chair Paeska, and we did not want to give direction to our staff to continue further discussions with the state on how to make availability of funds a lot easier, how to help our local Clear Lake Gleaners grow capacity, how to make it easier for us to do what's needed, especially, I just saw a report, this was provided to the Sonoma County Economic Development, there was some data about Lake County. It was about household struggles of being able to afford basic necessities. Sonoma County was at 36% of their population who struggled with basic necessities, which includes food. And Lake County was at 51%. And our need is great, and I think those discussions are very important, especially in light of the inflation that we've seen. We all eventually go grocery shopping at one point or another in the week, and we are seeing how much this is impacting, how much $100 or $10 can purchase for you. It's changing very rapidly. And so, I think these conversations are not just important, they're kind of somewhat dire for us to make sure that we can continue to support what the Gleaners have been doing for us since 1985 and seeing how it is that we can also help provide support to Redwood Empire Food Bank, who does a similar service in coming and bringing food to the people here in Lake County. And so, just wanted to provide that and get direction from the board rather than direction from two individual board members.
Right. Thank you for summing up our meeting so well.
Not sure if I missed anything.
No, I think you've got it. But ultimately, we need more resources in this county. We absolutely do. We need more resources for the Gleaners, and we need more resources for the Redwood Empire Food Bank. And so, we would just really like to get your direction as a board for us to proceed trying to get those resources from the state. So, do we have any questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Green?
More of a question. I don't even know how to phrase it, but one, thank you for the Gleaners. Also, thank you, Redwood Empire Food Bank. And I do plan to be in Findlay on November 16th. Looks like 8 a.m. That looks early to me, so. But it's more of a question because when, what we're talking about, both in the Gleaners and the food bank, and whatever comes from the federal government, you know, it generally involves commodity foods and, you know, bulk foods that, you know, you take the donations where they come from, you distribute the food that you get, and you hope for the best. But just in my own little journey as an emerging supervisor, trying to understand food insecurity through the lens of our native sovereign nations and what that means in terms of lost access here in Lake County to the chai and having a good reliable fishery that can help with food security. I was at Mendocino College a couple of weeks ago, hearing about how it's really hard to get good acorns. And not only is it hard to, you know, create the mush that was such a staple, it's also, we're losing very rapidly the cultural ability to even introduce these food groups to those people that traditionally have benefited from it. So I don't want to hijack this because definitely we have existing channels as they apply to food insecurity issues, and it generally involves like collecting food and distributing food, and we're not necessarily tuned in to any cultural variations that may be in there. But as we continue to go down this pathway, I just want to continue my own education that whatever food assistance we're giving is not just based on calories and food groups, but also some level of cultural awareness and appropriateness so that we can not only get food to people that are hungry, we can get them the foods that speak to them in their own culture and their own way and provide healing in addition to nutrition. So that was kind of a rambling question about where this all might go, but when we talk about food insecurity, I want to make sure we're hitting all the, not just all the food groups, but also all the cultural issues that we may need to address along the way.
Well, thank you for your input on that. But this is specifically toward, this is an ask to help us get more funding. Because if you look at the memo, for example, Redwood Empire Food Bank is, it costs them $2.4 million to provide food to Lake County, and they don't get any reimbursement. And so, what they're doing is skimming off their other programs in other counties. And that just can't, that's not sustainable. They're not in a good place to be doing that. And here we have Allison Goodman to explain that. So just to narrow this discussion back to the memo, it's just for accessing more funding for these two organizations and expand the capacity. But I will pass this off to Allison. Thank you for joining us. You missed the proclamation, but we'll send it over to you.
Okay, great. Good morning. So we're happy to speak, you know, on this to the larger group. I'm not sure what was shared prior to this, but, you know, we are in a position of providing food assistance and even to the aspect of cultural relevancy, that is something that we consider. So while we can't wildly adjust our provision of help per household, we are aware of who we're serving and offering a bounty of fresh produce and shelf-stable items and things that they can say no thank you to and an easy modality for them to do so. So that is something that's always at the forefront of our minds, just to speak to that. But really, this is the goal of getting more funding and more food into Lake County. Essentially, the way that the state contracts are set up is just to say, each county has a designated food provider, and, you know, they are the one conduit of how to get food into that community. And we are just recognizing that because of the increased poverty that exists in Lake County, you know, why not be more flexible and who can acquire food and funds to go ultimately to the people that need it? So this is a way to work together and, you know, open up more opportunities for us to get food and funding into Lake County.
Okay. Thank you, Allison. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, I wanted to also add, I noticed that you put federal partners. I'm not sure what you're referring to, but there's also a food distribution program on or near Indian reservations. It's conducted by the Sherwood Valley Rancheria. However, they do come to Lake County with partner tribes. And the qualifications are, there's some, you know, one of them being if you have little or no earnings or live on a fixed income such as social security, cash aid from social services, or tribal assistance for needy families. Social Security is a new one because I remember before, a lot of elders weren't allowed to receive it, and now they're able to do so. If you live near a reservation as well, or rancheria, you're able to go to whichever reservation that's in your vicinity and collect it. There's a calendar, there's a website for it. Another aspect of it is how do you qualify, the eligibility? It's basically, it's income guidelines, of course, and it's, you of course have to register that way if you have Medicare, unearned income, such as tribal revenue is included. At least one member of your household must submit proof of Indian enrollment, or your household must submit proof that you reside on an Indian reservation. So if you have a family member that is enrolled, that's another aspect. And so, I don't know if a lot of people know that. That's why I figured I would announce that. One of the downsides, I'm not sure, maybe someone can, you know, fill me in on this, but from what I understand, if you receive this food distribution program, you don't qualify for CalFresh or vice versa. You either choose one or the other. I don't know if that's changed. I'm just, okay, it is, it's still that way. So it depends on what your liking is, but either way, I just wanted to announce that as well because that's another program that brings food into the county.
Great. Thank you Supervisor Crandall. Did you, oh Supervisor Spatier?
And it sounds to me like Rachel Dillman is aware of the program, but just in case, if you could maybe email that to her, just to make sure. I know that in speaking with the Gleaners, the amount that they receive from the state and federal government does not cover the needs of the community, and they want to see more. And I think part of the conversation that you brought up Supervisor Green, I know that is a part of the conversation in our Food Policy Council, where we're looking how to increase our food production locally from our farmers. And part of that is also using the sustainability that history has shown us is possible here with, when it comes to acorns, hitch and other things. And so, those conversations are happening in the Food Policy Council and how to make that more abundantly available rather than on a maybe a family-to-family or more niche-driven rather than a larger availability. So I think those conversations are happening right now. What we're looking for is greater funding so we can figure out how that funding can help make sure it serves our community to the best as possible. At that point, we can maybe have a conversation once funding has been made available as to how that funding is used.
Okay. I share Simon.
Yeah, obviously in complete support to continuing the conversation. And we know it comes down to funding opportunities and those types of things. I want to thank the Gleaners. Multiple disasters, there's been opportunities to help folks that need the food, whether it's Redwood Food Bank, the Gleaners, folks that really need that opportunity or those types of things, have seen them participate in all the disasters that have happened here in Lake County. As far as the continuing conversations, you know, always thinking about how to fundraise money and those types of things, each organization, I know our organization, the Middletown Rancheria, would gladly host any fundraising events or anything if you guys are thinking of those types of things. I want to put that out there. I don't know if there's been any of those events in Lake County. I haven't seen anything, you know, local people really like to support each other. The other thing I just want to talk about, thank you for bringing up the Sherwood Valley Food Bank. All, you know, each one of our tribes have an agreement with them, you know, where they usually come in. We haven't done that for a while because I think our tribal members may be using the Redwood Food Bank that's right there right now. But we do have that continuous conversation and them coming into Middletown Rancheria when it's needed. As we move forward with the discussion of food security here in Lake County, I appreciate the conversation on the tribal side, but the board in Lake County is moving in the right direction. The cultural burns that are happening are not only burning off and protecting ourselves from wildfires, but as we just did our cultural burn on Middletown Rancheria in our oak grove, it was to make sure that the health of the acorns was one of the main things that we were looking for, for production. Obviously, we do that to get the weevils out so we can collect the right stuff. And as we move forward with tribal nations, talk to each other, already have some tribal folks that have reached out if they can come collect the acorns this year and begin to stabilize that as we move forward. So bringing back these cultural food items are really important. It's something we're all focusing on. So I do appreciate the county, all the fire departments, everybody working together, Tara, everyone is starting to move in this direction. So as we move forward, and I know we talk about acorns, we talk about hitch, but there are many other small things that the tribes, they, you know, I call them the rabbit-eared sunflowers, you know, those are like salad for, you know, as you go through, there's many different things. You can eat manzanita berries. There are all kinds of things that are still out there that we're doing. So that food sovereignty from a tribal standpoint is something to keep our culture alive and pass it to the next generation. But ultimately, we know how important the food service is that happens in Lake County. We've had this conversation, I think, at different levels. That's also a place where we can engage the folks that need the help through Department of Social Services, housing, all those things. The folks that have the food insecurity also have other issues that need to be addressed. So taking advantage of those opportunities while folks are picking up the food is really important to understand how we can help those folks that just need that hand up to make their lives a little bit better. So I know I'm rambling on now, too. But completely support it, and anything your committee has together to bring back to the board, I would wholeheartedly support bringing more funds in for both the Gleaners and the Redwood Food Bank to close that financial gap.
Great. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, quick question now that we're bringing it full circle. Funding, yeah, we need money. And I know, Gleaners, you're transitioning to a new facility, but I don't know actually the status of that, and I see everyone in the room here could probably give me an update. So if there were needs in permitting assistance or building out the new site and stuff like that, I hope these considerations will be part of that talk and in addition to whatever ongoing funding we need to get the food supplies in here and keeping running. I know for a fact the Gleaners are kind of in a transitional mode and may need some level of appropriate support to get into the newer, bigger facility.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, I wanted to also think of another aspect that's, it could be beneficial to folks where they live at. In our rural communities, we can look at our own personal gardens. I know that there's community gardens as well, but that's something that people can also do. But I think the hard part would be the training. And so, I know when I went to Colorado in July, they had a group called Denver Urban Gardens. Now, I'm not sure if we have something like that yet. I do know that we have community gardens, not community gardens, I'm sorry, what do you call those? You know, when they have the food markets, the market, farmers markets, yeah, where you can trade and do all that. Sorry, I repeated myself on that. But, you know, those are other areas. I'm not sure if they're allowed to receive CalFresh for payment on those, and they are.
Yes.
Okay, so that's another aspect that keeps it local. But, you know, I'll get some more, I have the information for the gardens and see if we have someone local that already does that or has the capability because that could be another way to foster some of the gardens. The gardens can give them what they need there, and then their dollars can be spent if they are low income on other things when it comes to using CalFresh or anything else.
NCO has the Gardens Project, and so there are community gardens all around the county. You can sign up for a plot for the season. Unfortunately, now, we're kind of out of the season for a lot of food production, and that's when people really struggle the most during the holidays and in the wintertime. Supervisor Spatier?
I believe that, I saw Bev's hand come up at one point or another, and just wanted to make sure she had the chance to.
I was going to open it up for a public comment in just a minute. Okay. Are we all finished here at the board? All right. Well, and more things.
Just one last, last comment. So the Equal to CalFresh program, I think it's called TNAP, there's Tribal Native Assistance Program. So CalFresh is for non-tribal communities, and I think it's called TNAP is what they have for tribal communities. I've just seen that rolled out now. That's another program I know that hopefully all the seven tribes are looking at, too. That's basically CalFresh, but on the tribal side.
So I'll open it up for a public comment. I'm hoping Rachel can come up and talk about how we advertise all of our distribution days because I know that that memo floats around quite frequently. So if anyone would like to come up, and I'm going to ask Rachel to also first, lead us off. And because you're staff, you don't have the three-minute time.
Sure, yeah. If you want to know where we post the food distribution list, which includes both the Gleaners, Redwood Empire Food Bank, any distribution that we're aware of out there in the community, it's posted on our Facebook page, which is Lake County Social Services. It's also reshared through a variety of different County of Lake Facebook pages. So the main County of Lake Facebook page also reposts it. We put that list out once a month on the first of the month. The distributions can change, so we once a month, on the first of the month. The distributions can change, so we do always recommend people double-check with the distribution site before they drive all the way there, if it's a long way from where you're coming, to make sure the distribution truly is occurring. And for any of our community organizations out there doing a distribution, if you want to get ahold of me and let me know about your distribution, if it's not on the list, my number is 707-995-4290. Other questions?
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you for your participation in our discussions, too.
Any other public comment? Did you want to come up, Bev?
Thank you. I'd just like to make a couple of corrections. Excuse me, I frogged. The Clear Lake Gleaners was organized August 8th, 1951. Okay, so, that's okay. The information was given to you, and it was not correct, okay? Supervisor Green, for your information, and everybody else's. This man behind me, Juan Dominguez, will be on the Finley site around 3:30 in the morning on November 16th. And the volunteers start showing up shortly after that to load the trucks, to go to the outlying sites. They will leave the property there in Finley at 5:30, so that they make the distribution drop-offs at all the sites, so the distribution can start at 8:00, or earlier if we happen to be ready. In Finley, we know we're going to really be bombarded with people this time, and we probably will start about 7:15. Volunteers start showing up anywhere from 5:30 until 7:00, and we're ready to go. I'd like to ask Juan or Kate if they have anything they want to add that I've missed. We definitely, definitely looking for funding and assistance with the development of the property that we purchased. We've had a few little problems right off the bat with the storms this last winter, they brought some trees down, and just recently brought another big branch down on the fence. And I'm not quite sure whether that might be county, county tree in the right of way. I mean, we took care of the brands that came down, we just haven't repaired the fence yet, but we are working towards that development. And it's a big project, and it's very expensive, but we've totally outgrown the Finley site, and need to get the people, the cars, off the road during the distribution, because they go all the way down past Scully Packing. And it's a tremendous, tremendous project there. So, thank you again for all your support. If there's any further questions, I'm here to answer them, and so are my cohorts.
Thank you, Bev, for explaining the need. Thank you, both Allison and Bev, for kind of explaining your individual needs for our county. And I, you know, we each have discretionary funding, and so, I could, I would like to give $5,000 to each the Gleaners and the Redwood Food Bank for, as soon as possible, for the holiday season, and encourage any of my other board members, if they have that in their budget, I'm sorry, I know you don't, to, to help with this incredible need throughout the holidays and into the winter season.
Thank you very much for that. We, I failed to mention the Reach and Resiliency Grant that we're working under right now, and we need to reach out to, to all of the tribes, to pull them into the system. I'm not quite sure who and where to start, whether it's Moke, or EJ, or who, so that we can reach out to each one of the tribes here in the county, and start pulling them into the distribution system, and whatever else we can do to help get the food out to, to your people. Thank you. And the other thing is the fact that we do get donations from the grocery stores, and I don't want to slight Safeway's, Brunner's Grocery Outlet, even Papa Murphy's. Through the Edible Food Recovery Program, we pick up food daily from those sites, and that's distributed to the public, as well as to the, well, it used to be called the Warming Shelter, I'm not quite sure what it's called, but we supply them anywhere from 300 to 400 pounds of food a week. So, the food is going out there, whatever we get, it goes out. Great, thank you all.
Thank you so much.
And I would say, reach out to each supervisor, so that we can make sure to connect you to all the tribes all around the lake.
Any other public comment? Allison?
I will just say, we, because of the way the contracts work for Reach and Resiliency, we have the same grant here in Sonoma County, and working with our local tribes to get food security out. So, of course, Gleaners would be connecting with Lake County tribes, but if there's any way that, you know, we can help with how we're doing things in Sonoma County, we could certainly offer up just our best practices thus far in partnering with tribes. So, we've been doing that work for about a year and a half already, and so, if we can be of any assistance in setting that up, or what it looks like, because maybe Bev has mentioned before, it didn't come with additional food. It came with funding on how to get food to rural and remote and tribal places, but it didn't actually help with the amount of food. And so, that can be tricky, but again, we're happy to share how we've done that so far in Sonoma County.
Wonderful, thank you. Any other public comment? We have anyone in the Zoom room? Yes. We have a hand up. Looks like it's also from, yeah, our, from Redwood Empire Food Bank.
Hello, everybody. I'm not sure, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Is that David?
Yes, it is. Thank you. So, first of all, thank you very much for having the Redwood Empire Food Bank at your meeting this morning. There's just a couple of things I want to say, very briefly, which is, one, the Redwood Empire Food Bank comes in peace. And I know in all the complexity of all the public work that you do, it's always nice to have allies. It's nice to be able to, in some section of the work you're trying to do, just to know that you have a willing participant that's willing to, to help and not make it difficult. So, I want to say that the Redwood Empire Food Bank is enthusiastic, enthusiastic about improving the lives of everyone in, in Lake County. And so, we know that there are resources available at the state level, for sure, that we have not been able to draw down to help in Lake County, and so, we are eager to be able to do that. The second thing is that we imagine that there are, and know, that there are resources far beyond our reach, that perhaps those of you in the public sector can understand, both from a state and federal standpoint, and we're not really privy to those kinds of conversations, but to the extent that you can help connect us to those resources, we are more than happy to do the work, and we will continue to be there. The only thing is that we can't do it without financial support, because we do everything, but the only thing we don't do is print money. So, we need to fuel our trucks, pay our staff, buy the food, et cetera. So, with your help, we can do whatever you would like us to do, happily. Thank you for your time and interest. Appreciate it very much.
Okay, and David, before you go, could you please state your name for the record?
Yes, I'm David Goodman, and I'm a hunger relief worker here at the Redwood Empire Food Bank, and the CEO.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Come up to the microphone, Joan?
Joan Moss. I go to the Kelseyville Thrift Shop every Monday, and local ranchers come and drop off produce that's totally free. And when I do go to the senior center in Kelseyville, there's always free produce, and free bags of spaghetti, et cetera, et cetera. So, there's a lot of interchange, and I do want to make a comment that a friend of mine from Elim has been disenfranchised for 20 years, and she has property at Elim, and she's not, she's not enrolled, but she's, she is ethically Native American. So, does she qualify or not? That's what I'm wondering.
For which aspect?
I'd rather not say. She's a member of Elim.
No, no, I'm not talking about who it is. Which aspect do you mean? For CalFresh, or for food, you know, or which Gleaners, or Redwood Empire Food?
I don't know.
Basically qualify for those, because it's for anybody, right, I would think. And then, if, since they're disenfranchised, which, you know, I, that's, I can't stand that, but it is what it is. They can apply for CalFresh, because they obviously wouldn't have the certification to apply for food, the Sherwood Valley Food Distribution Program. So, I would think they qualify for everything else, and have that option for CalFresh.
Recently, I was going to the bank, and the sidewalk was blocked with all this food. And I went in, did my business, and came back, and I was interviewed before I got my food. They had to know who I am, where I live, how many children in the home. They practically didn't ask for my birthday, but it was really quite amazing how they document when you do get the food. People who aren't really sure of their documentation would have a harder time getting the food. That happened to me, and I, being a journalist, I asked her, "Why do you need to know my name before I pick up a bag of apples?" And she said, "It's the government." Thank you.
Okay, do we have anyone else in the chambers, or the Zoom room, that would like to give a public comment?
Just to add, you know, I'm pretty familiar with, with the tribes in my district, so I probably know who Joan's talking about, and I can touch base with, with the Gleaners about the tribes in my district, because I'm pretty familiar with who you need to get ahold of, and that. So, I'll talk with, with you all offline here.
Okay, so I'm going to bring it back to the board, and it sounds like we have consensus to continue this work.
Right.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, and just, I was going to add, if I could.
Sure.
I'm doing it on the fly. The challenge is there. I'm meeting the challenge on the fly, so I will, I appreciate the discretionary contribution of 5K each. I will do that as well, for my discretionary funds. So, 5K to Gleaners, 5K to Redwood Food Bank. And for the Gleaners, I want to allocate an additional 5K to help with some of that planning that needs to happen at the new site. I know you're going to incur some hard costs for site maps and stuff like that, so I'll allocate 5K for those startup costs for the new site.
Thank you Supervisor Green, that's wonderful. So, to the, to the Gleaners and Redwood Empire Food Bank, we deeply appreciate everything that you do, and please look out for an email. We're just going to need to have a little bit of paperwork, and then we will get you those checks as soon as possible. So, thank you so much.
I will see what I can squeeze out of mine. It's almost completely spoken for, pledged for, but if I can, if I can squeeze, you know, something out, it may not be five, but at least maybe half, I'll see what I can do, you know.
Thank you. Awesome.
And I think I have enough in my funds, so.
Perfect.
I'll do the five and five, too, so I'm pretty sure.
Awesome. Who needs a fundraiser? All you have to do is come for a proclamation. So, this, I just, I really hope that you can see how much your service means to all of our constituents, and all of our districts, and countywide. And so, whatever we can do to continue this partnership, and having these conversations, and sitting down together, is how we move forward. And so, I appreciate the meeting that we got together just recently, and the calls that we've been on, and the outreach, and I know that we can achieve a lot more as we go down the road together. So, thank you so much.